I'm watching.
Are we ready?
How's it going?
I did. They got the call.
You gonna do the order?
Oh, we're going this way?
Yeah, one with me down there.
Which way?
I'm ready.
No.
It's the same as five.
I'm gonna wait for this one.
Yeah, there you go. They can't. They can't.
The word. Yeah. I guess right. And this will be for this three right here. And this one will be for...
Whisper to me soft.
We missed one?
Yeah.
Can't. Yeah, I just can't hear. Who else would be there? I'm like... Ready, Holly? Is that sir?
Check one, two.
Safety in the middle road here.
All right. Maury got me.
He's here.
All right. I think it's on a little bit. You want me to describe the format? Okay. All right. Six o'clock, we're gonna get started, just so that we have plenty of time and make sure that you're hearing from them. What is it, Holly? You're not getting me on the feed. Test one, two. Test one, test one, two. Test one, two. Check one, two. What are you talking about? Check, check. Test one, two. You're not getting me?
You don't want me right now, though, do you?
You got somebody talking? Who's that? Ain't nobody else with a microphone. Did you get me? Who's you? Maury? Is somebody talking on a mic? A secret mic?
I'm talking right now. Hey, this is me.
No, I'm not getting any of that.
I'm putting mine down.
Claire, does somebody picking up Eli?
Yeah, you.
Okay. Who's you? Is the Lord talking to you? What in the world? My goodness. Test one, two. Are we on?
Well, they're on. They're on Facebook. Let me take your...
Okay. Well, they'll get to hear the good stuff on Facebook. I'm just gonna tell the rules here. I thank you guys for coming. The way that we decided to do this and to set this up is to give a forum that [inaudible] ones. And so, we wanted... First off, if you're not listening to Lunch with Brian and Steve, I don't know what's wrong with you. You should be watching that show. I'm tired of doing these interviews when we're ready to go on and do something else here pretty soon. So, we're hopefully gonna have some more stuff. Football, or basketball, or something else on the show here pretty soon. But, we didn't really plan on, when we started the show, ending up in this position, but the Lord works in weird ways, and so here we are. And so, we've made it very clear that what we want, and I've... Payne's where we're residing now, but our ultimate home is in heaven. And so, we wanna be good stewards of Fort Payne, but we got a better place that we're heading to. And so, I think everybody on this stage, and everybody that's here, wants the best for Fort Payne, and that's what we wanna see. We're here to answer questions that haven't been asked, and they're good questions. We've vetted all of them. So, here's what we're gonna do. It's gonna be real fast. We're gonna give each candidate one minute to kinda talk through maybe a mischaracterization of them, maybe something that was said that they thought... Somebody heard them say something that's different than what they meant. They can kinda clear the air. And so, hopefully with Facebook feed, they can just kinda go, hey, you know what? At the last forum, this was said, and I thought it was this, and I just wanna make sure my point's clear on this. They're gonna have a minute to do that. Then, we've got them in order. We're gonna ask a question, and they'll have a minute. So, each person will be the first person to answer the question off the top of their head, and then each other candidate could have thirty seconds or so to rebut that answer, or to give their input to that answer, or to add their position clarifying on that answer. And then, I'm gonna moderate that and kinda go, okay, hey, that's enough of that. We're gonna go to the next one. And so, each candidate is gonna be the first one to hear one of these questions. The others can respond off of that for a little bit, and then we'll work our way down to Mike. Mike's the last one. And so, then at the end, you'll have a minute to just kinda summarize, or if you wanna go back to another point, but we're trying to keep it brief. And I've asked them to do that, just a minute, thirty seconds. Get to your point. If you're a rambler, you can't ramble. We gotta get to the point and get on to the next question, just so we have enough time to cover some ground. All right? So, we're excited about this. I think it's gonna be good. I was a little bit nervous leading up to this, but after we've kinda vetted everything out, I feel real good about the questions. There's no gotchas. We're just trying to make sure that everybody understands people's position on what we're doing. So, having said that, Chris is gonna kinda give us a lowdown of the place here, and then do a prayer for us, and then Steve's gonna do the pledge, and we'll get started.
Welcome to my life. This is where I spend a majority of my time. Chris Roberts School of Music, and we do this for the children, and we have adults. We have all the way up to seventy-one years old. So, you're never too late to learn an instrument. Also, we need to clarify some things. Bathroom? We got a bathroom in this little room right here. I don't know why they put it in the kitchen. It was here when I got here. So, it's in there, and then we have a bathroom in the very far corner, okay? In case of fire or something, we have a door in the back. We have a door in the front. If you're not... If you're not... If you're confused, follow me, okay? But anyway, well, I appreciate y'all coming. Some of you probably have never been in here. It's a joyous place. This is a kid's place, and it's not... It's messy, okay? But, these kids have fun. Thank you for coming. I appreciate y'all coming. I really do. It means a lot. Love every one of you, and I wish you the best of luck, okay? All right. Let's go to the Lord and Word of Prayer. Before we do, I'm gonna say this, though. After you finish tonight, come on down to Mater's and eat you a pizza. Okay? Right? Yeah. I don't know who's singing. Maury didn't know who's singing. We may not have anybody playing. I may have should have been there. I don't know. But anyway, let's go to the Lord and Word of Prayer. I, dear heavens Father, we come to you, and we thank you, God, for all the many blessings of life. We thank you, God, for what you mean to us and what you mean to this city. And God, you do not want anything bad to befall us. You want all good things. And God, help us to be good stewards of where we live. Help us to be good stewards to those we serve. Help us to do those things that are most pleasing to you. And God, I ask that you speak through these candidates so that we may learn more about them and about the things they want to accomplish while they're in office. And God, just bless this time, and we give you the praise, Lord, and our offered all in your name that we pray. Amen.
All right. If you'll stand, Steve's gonna lead us.
As my third grade teacher went, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, verity, and justice for all.
All right. You can be seated. All right. So, we're going in order. This is our order, right, candidates? This is our order? Okay. So, Todd, you're up first. Each candidate will have about a minute just to kinda clarify or clarify a position, or whatever it is you'd like to do. So, they should have... Maury, we good on mics?
Good evening. I'm Todd Simpson. I'm running for city council, of course. Glad to be here. Thank you for attending. Thank you to Chris Roberts for hosting this great event. My son, Micah, actually learned drums here from a guy named Mark Herndon, if you remember him. So, thankful to be here, thankful for what he does here. As far as the campaign, I've been pleased with the support, and as far as my stand, or my views, or anything I've answered up till now, I'm content. I'm pleased with what I've presented to you as a city, and I intend to work hard for you. I appreciate your support in the election. If you have any questions, any concerns, please call me or look me up. Thank you.
My name's Leslie Vaughn. I'm running for city council. I'm just a poor country boy, trying to make a better city for my wife, my little girl. I want to put it in the Lord's hands, and he will lead us through whatever we get to.
I'm John Smith. John Smith. I'm an incumbent, running for my second and last term. I'm a firm believer in term limits. What do I do different than I've done the past four and a half years? I'm not gonna do anything any different than I've done the past four and a half years. I'm gonna take a stand. I'm gonna stay by it. I'm gonna listen to what the people say, and sometimes I don't agree. Some people don't agree with me, and that's fine. That's what it's all about. So, I can sleep at night knowing that I'm... I try to live by, I do what I say. And all y'all know, you can call me twenty-four seven.
My name is Ken Mayo. I've been a small business owner for thirty-five years here in Fort Payne. I'm located on Airport Road. I've been driving a school bus for Fort Payne for about fifteen years now, and I've... As for anything controversial, I... Last week, I thought I'd do something about... Talk about something nice, 'cause some of the candidates been talking about parks and everything, and I said, well, let's just talk about Buc-Ee's. But then, the social media went south, and I said, you know what? I'm just taking it down. And that's what I think, because I don't want... I don't want nothing negative. I'm not a negative guy. I always... The glass is always half-full, okay? So, I'm not gonna talk dirty politics or nothing, but I just wanna do good for the community, and that's all... That's me. If you know me, I've been doing it for a while with the Chamber, also with Mark for Life, and now with the Lions Club.
Hi there. I'm Jeff Young. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It means a lot to see all these faces. A lot to thank y'all for putting this on. I'm happy with what I've did so far, and the people I've talked to, and I feel real good about the future of Fort Payne with these people that's up here. These people, including me, whoever gets in here is gonna make a difference. And I hope all the citizens know that I'm gonna be their voice, and if you come to me with a problem, I'm not gonna turn away. I'm not gonna forget about you. I'm gonna follow through with what you want, and I'll get back with you with an answer one way or another. So, thank y'all again.
Hello. My name is Chad Williamson, and I'm running for Fort Payne City Council, 'cause I think we have so much potential here. I... You know, just like many of you think that we can do a better job, but I know we've done a good job already, but I think we can go further with that. And so, me being the businessman that I am, I wanna continue putting those business principles to our council. It's a business, and we gotta run it like a business. And again, it's your money. It's forty million dollars almost, guys, and we can do a lot of things, like our infrastructure, like our kids need things to do around here, and I just wanna put a plan together, something on paper, something that gives you a vision that says, we can do this. Just because people say, you know, we don't have the money, or we don't need that, I disagree. I looked around at the cities around us, and they have the things that you talk about. Nine times out of ten, every door I knock on, they talk about our streets and our things to do around town. We can do that, but it's gonna take redirecting some funds. It's gonna take increasing our industry and increasing our tourism to get those things. But it can be done, so have faith, and we'll get this done. But thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Thank you, Chris, for hosting it. It's a great facility. Thank you.
My name's Richard Kemp, and I was nervous to begin with, but y'all are not that rough-looking crew, so I know most of it. But anyway, I'm pleased with everything that's going on with me. You know, you gotta be a real stick in the mud to tell somebody their face that you're not gonna vote for them, or that kinda thing. So, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, but, you know, I can't be anything that I'm not, and that's just a Fort Payne guy all the way through. And I'll promise I'll make it, just to work hard for you, and, you know, 'cause this is where I've chosen to... You know, they're gonna move me from Pumpkin Center to Walker Chapel, so I'm here to stay. So, anyway, thank you, guys, for being here. I appreciate being invited, and I look forward to this evening, so...
All right. I'm Bo Gentlin. I'm... Thank y'all so much for showing up. I'm excited. Thank you, Coach Roberts. I took guitar lessons from Coach Roberts in his house on the mountain when I was in seventh grade. He's also my history teacher. I did that for a few years, right until my fingers got calloused, and then I quit. But, you know, I'm sure Coach envisioned this at some point down the line, and I feel ashamed that I never even thought this would be possible. This building is very cool. I hate that this is the first time I'm here. I'm very content with how things have gone so far. I think this season of life, this election season, has been a roller coaster, but I think the campaign that I'm trying to run has been steady and positive, and that's what I'm trying to bring to this race. I'm very excited about the future of Fort Payne. I'd love to earn your vote, and I can't wait to hear the questions.
I am Heather Wooton. I came into this thinking it would be maybe a little easier than it actually is, because I just wanted to project good. I'm a worker bee. I'd rather hear from the people and hear what they have to say, as opposed to saying, this is what I'm gonna do for this. This is what I'm gonna do for this. I want to know what the people say about it before I even start saying, this is what I think, because what I think really doesn't matter. I'm just wanting to be put in a seat to where I can do what's best, what people want for the city. Thank you so much for coming out. I missed the last forum because I was sick, so I'm so excited to be here tonight. Thank you so much.
I'm Mike Grant. I've been fairly happy the way the campaign's gone so far, first time I've ran for anything. Like Kemp says, you know, we have a few that'll come out and just be against you. That's about three so far. One of them got my wife. Seems to be people I've met in my prior occupation, so that's not too bad, if that's the only reason. I'm associate broker for RE/MAX. Been there quite a few years now, doing the realty. Me and my wife have a small farm. Started out hobby farm type thing. It's turned into almost a business. I'm not sure how that happened, but I think it qualifies me between the RE/MAX part and is... You run your own business as a realtor, and in the farm, you kinda do, too. And my service for the city all these years, I think, helped me run. But I wish everybody the best on stage, and we'll see how it goes.
All right. Before we get to questions, Holly, do we have everything we need? Are we... Everybody hearing it? Can everybody hear in here? We good on that? Okay. Good. All right.
These hots are hot. It's hot. It's hot.
You have water there if you'd like.
The water is hot.
The water is... Okay. Okay, Todd. At the previous forum, this question was kinda controversial in that some of the candidates didn't understand the question, didn't hear the question. It was a yes-no question, so we'll try to make it a little more clear this time. Would you support and cooperate with ICE if they conduct an investigation in Fort Payne?
Thanks for the question. I would support ICE if they were to do an investigation here in Fort Payne, mainly because it's the law. I'm gonna follow the law. I'm gonna support that. There's a way to become a citizen in this country, and I believe you should take every effort to do that and follow through with that. But the bigger thing is following the law. I respect, and we've got some people that have been in law in our attendance tonight and been a part of that, and of course, Mike Grant been in law, but I fully support supporting ICE in Fort Payne.
Does anybody else wanna make a comment on that? Anybody else? Heather, go ahead.
I think that there's a lot of gray area there. Maybe I should stand for that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of gray area there. I would as well support ICE, but there are citizens trying to get their citizenship. They are, actually not citizens, but they are in the process of getting their citizenship, and it's a long, drawn-out process. It is hard for them to do. I've supported several. I've written letters of recommendation for those people, and they still have a really hard time getting in there. So, I think that the system is a little broken. Yes, I would support everything by the law, because ICE is, you know, the law. But I do feel like our system could be a little easier for people to get in and have it easier for them to be citizens.
Okay. Is there anything that you could see from that in the city council position? I mean, are you just trying to make a... Articulate a point bigger than just the law?
Yeah. I really don't. I know that we, as citizens, can support the people that are trying to go through the process legally.
Right.
Because that is the way to do it.
Okay.
So, you can... You can give them... It's cost so much money, guys, and it takes so much time for them to do this. And the ones that are trying to do it legally really need the help. Maybe a letter of recommendation if they work for you, or as a friend, if you know them, would help them tremendously.
Okay. Is anybody else... Okay. Leslie, go ahead.
Being an ex-military, if you cross over into another country illegally, they will put you into prison on hard labor. I would support ICE, and I would also support them coming to this country legally.
Sure. Okay.
They can apply for citizenship before they cross the border.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? Last chance. All right. Steve?
Mr. Vaughn, this, as we've mentioned, all these questions are from the citizens, and some are specific for a council member, and in this case, question for city council candidates that have never served in public office. How are you preparing for the job of councilperson to avoid a protracted learning curve post-election? That is, how are you getting up to speed regarding governance, city rules, processes, and regulations prior to becoming a city council member?
Well, the way you get up to speed is you get the rule books down, you follow the policies and procedures, you read the policies and procedures, you look at the past city council and how they done the... Handle the money. You would also look at how they wasted the money and increased taxes, and all the...
Anybody else? Have you guys thought about... This is a really good question, 'cause anytime you start a new job, I mean, you got four-year term. You gotta get a note when you get hit the ground running. How do you accelerate that process? What have you done personally? I know a lot of you have attended meetings, attended council meetings, so is there anything specific that you would like to add to that? Bo?
I've got established relationships with at least five former counselors, all still local. I've picked their brains. I've asked questions. You know, I feel confident that if I were to get in there, and I needed somebody to lean on, in addition to we have incumbents re-running who could win seats, you're also gonna have a wealth of knowledge you can dig into. And I've also got relationships back from Birmingham. I have a friend who's on the Hoover City Council. I have a former coworker currently running for Calera City Council. I mean, there's a municipal election in every city...
Sure.
...in the state of Alabama right now.
Okay. Ken, go ahead. Let's see. There you go.
Some of us find out the hard way. It's hard to know every single ordinance that's out there, but we have an ordinance officer, and I know when I started my business, I had one show up my door. Says, you... How long you been in business? Said, two years. Well, you don't have a business license. Oh. But that's okay. You just come with me to City Hall, we're gonna get you one. And she also showed me how to collect sales tax and to fill out the proper paperwork to pay it. So, just obey the law, but we have ordinance officer to do that, that can assist you, and once you get to know them, you know, the rest is just... It'll come to you. And I just wanna say that I wouldn't focus so much trying to memorize all this stuff, but if you put a sign down to a power line, you know what happens. The officer comes and talks to you, says, you can't do that.
Anybody else wanna have a comment on that? Heather, go ahead.
I can't have a comment on everything.
John, your name?
I apologize.
Well, how about it?
I think coming into a new... Any new job that you ever come into, you have no idea what you're doing, and that's okay, because if you want experience, you have people that have experience. That's... Why would we ever vote if new people never came in in the first place? But I think that coming into something new, and I'll be the first to say it, maybe I don't have all the answers, but I think having experience... You can always train somebody to do any job. I could train anybody in this room to do my job right now. But what you can't train is heart and character. So, I feel confident about doing a new job, but you can't train for heart and character.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, John.
You can't find what you need in a policy book. This is a... This game is human relations. You gotta learn... It has been an eye-opening experience for me. You gotta learn that today, so-and-so's for this, but tomorrow, that's not necessarily the case. So, you've got to work on... I'd say, if I don't get back into... You know, any advice I'd say is work on your skills, interpersonal skills, 'cause that means a lot.
Okay. Anybody else? Feel free to jump in. We thought we were gonna have to hold y'all back, and y'all not doing enough.
You gave us very strict time limits backstage.
That's true. That's true. Y'all are abiding by that, by the way, so that's good. All right. Anybody else? All right. Steve?
Okay. This particular question is for the incumbents. John, maybe you. What have you learned serving as a councilperson that you want to carry forward in your next term? That is, what has been an important lesson learned that will impact how you govern in your new term?
I think what I've learned is just what I talked about. You need to be honest and open, make a stand, make your point, and stay there. You know, the time for debate is in the work sessions. We need to have an open mind when we go in, and then things you're not going to agree with, you gotta stand your ground. It's easy to be overwhelmed and, you know, and don't think pressure's not applied from outside, inside the council chambers, but you've just gotta be strong and stand your But you've just got to be strong and stand your grounds. And if you believe in what you stand for, it's simple.
So to that point, what have you guys, where do you draw on for that decisiveness? That decision-making? Because there is going to be, I mean, all you got to do is get on Facebook. There's outside pressure all the time. So what is it that you're relying on? How are you going to be different? How are you going to be unique? How are you going to be decisive in moments when maybe you're, I mean, you're making a decision that's against maybe what other people are wanting? Or you may lose some friendships? I mean, this is, this has gotten kind of ugly in some places.
Find out who's got guts and who doesn't. It's in the nutshell.
So how would, how would we, how are we going to describe that? What do you, go ahead.
I'm going to rely on what the Lord shows me. I'm going to go by what he says. I am going to rely on relationships, and I am going to stick to my guns. If I don't agree with something, you will know it.
All right, anybody else?
I am talking every single time, and I apologize, but I missed the last forum. So I'm just getting a little extra in. I'm not going to be a politician. I'm just not. I realize that I'm going to be seated in a political seat, but I'm, I refuse to let politics take over everything. I'm as common as they come. I'm just like every other person sitting in here, other than I'm on the stage tonight. So I'm not going to let politics take over.
All right.
I'll give it one shot, right quick. I kind of agree with John. We're going to have to go on our background. You know, as far as walking into any job, you're not going to know what's up automatically. But, you know, policy and procedure takes you so far. Being able to communicate with people and listen to their issues or not, and then you try to fix it or not, and be honest about what you do. You know, if you tell somebody you're going to fix it, then follow through with what you're doing. Don't tell one lady something and this other lady the other, and then hope for the best.
All right, why not? I would just add research to that, because it depends on the topic. You know, it might not be a controversial issue. It might be a retaining wall. You know, you got to go talk to your department heads. You got to talk to experts in the field if you're going to make a decision on a matter that you're just not well-versed in. And I'd also add, you know, relationships like everybody else has said. But I think there's a certain amount of research that you're going to have to do, depending on the topic at hand.
All right, Mr. Mayo. Should all city jobs and wages be posted on the public domain?
I'd like to know. I mean, I would like to know who's getting paid. And I heard this comment yesterday about the 6% in the new budget for all city employees. And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the guy that mows the grass and paints structures and cleans. But what about those that are in supervisor positions? What are they making? And do they really need a 6% raise? I would, I'd be more to those that are starting at the bottom and working our way up.
That's a good point.
What do y'all think? John, you voted on it.
I voted, I voted yes on it. That's the hill I'm going down. If we don't, if we don't have employees that stay with us, it's costing us money. We, we have been in a position when we came in, we were training all departments. We had people leaving after they were trained and go to local, go out here on the mountain and work for, for another city. And that's costing money in training and expenses, trying to get people here. And I kind of disagree. I think the supervisors do need raises. The last thing you need is a key person to leave. You know, one, one department head leaves and it sets you back. So I had, I had no problem. Now, I wouldn't have any problem at all with a performance-based raise system. We've, we've bantered that around a little bit. But I keep going back to this. You know, we keep talking about the infrastructure. We got to have, you know, we have roads, we got to have sewer systems. You got to have people. You got to have people to work and do that.
Mike?
I would disagree partly the, you know, over time, and I've been in with the city a long time, there would be, come up time for raises. I've done every job from the low end to the top end nearly. And I would say it's almost a slight disrespect if you say just because you've been there, you're the chief or assistant chief or a lieutenant over a shift, that you didn't deserve the raise that you've got. Over the years, we went through a process. Sometime we hire people in that are making more than, you'll hire a patrolman's making more than a sergeant because you're trying to attract them. And all you've done is ticked that guy off. And, and, you know, first time a job comes up, they're going to leave, and you lose the center of your department. If you don't have the center of the department training the new people coming in, and then those centers going to move up, obviously, over time. If you don't do that, then you're going to have problems. I would also lean a little bit that it should, the evaluations and the merit should be there. If you have somebody that's a dead rear end and stuck there for a long time, that's cleaned that up good before you got on to me. But, you know, you should have the evaluations as you go, and you should earn that position as you go.
Okay. What do you guys think? I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the budget John has. What do you think about the raise? And let's go there. What, where are we standing? Go ahead, Ken.
I just wanted to say that our school system has done something for bus drivers only and offered us a bonus, basically, just to show up for work.
Yeah, that's true.
And because it is a very stressful job, and you've got 70, 80 kids on your bus, as opposed, I mean, and I substitute teach too. And, and it's a challenge. But, you know, we have these kids a lot longer than even teachers do for a period of time. Sometimes up to two hours or even more. And, but the bonus is what probably kept most of us there. So it does work, and it is targeted.
Yeah. What do you guys think about the budget that was passed today? It was 5-0. Any, any comments? Come on.
I think it could have been better. There's no doubt.
The budget could have been better, overall.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of fat in it that could be cut out. The election time is the wrong time of year for some people.
Okay, there we go.
To talk about cutting the fat out, you know, some, because somebody's feelings are going to get hurt.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's as good as we could get right now. I think the next council coming in needs to fine-tune it. There's some things that need to come out of it, which I'd certainly support. But it's going to warrant more talk. You know, it's not, this isn't tablets from, from Moses. This is a living document that can change. So I, I think there is more work done, but I think we made a lot of progress.
Okay. What about you guys? Comments on the budget?
I, I agree. I think there's a lot of progress made. But I think the new council should come in and line by line. And if we do have to trim some fat, as he said, I think that we should do that until we can get to a place to where it's very comfortable to say, hey, let's, let's give out raises.
Okay.
Let's, let's do that.
All right. Come on, budget talk, budget talk. It's money. Here we go.
In reference to the budget, like John said, I don't think it shall be pushed to the end of the, end of a term. We've had a lot of Facebook activity from some folks that we hadn't heard from in four, five years. Also on, you know, the, our budget, you shouldn't push items, remove them out now and push them down. It's going to hit on this same budget in the next year. If a $2 million bill is coming due, just because you remove it now and push it six months, it's still due. So that's not a surplus. That's a, that's a line item. And I think that's an issue that we need to pay real close attention to.
Go ahead, Leslie.
About these 6% raises, I'm all for giving employees raises, but I would like to know where the money's coming from for these raises.
Chad?
Yeah, I think this is a business question. How many of you guys own businesses out here? Please raise your hand if you do. Do you guys give bonuses like that and raises like that? If you do, you don't go in business long. Your raises should be laid out in a long, long-term plan. As the company grows, as the employee gets better. This is called merit-based. It should not have been across the road within a week of our election. That looks very unethical, because it looks like you're buying votes. I have a huge problem with passing a budget a week before this. So again, I'll stand up and say what many of you have thought. We definitely think most of those employees probably deserve a raise. However, how it was done, behind the scenes, coming out, changing all that, looks really bad on a business. And so I'm, I'm pretty upset by how our city leaders have done, but I'm not surprised. We've watched this going for five years, and our city will continue to lead behind certain departments, which being infrastructure and your families, which should be in parks and recs, if we continue to run our business on a whim. I mean, this is a last-minute ditch effort. It looks bad. Thank you.
All right, I would just add that as citizens, we're not privy to every line item on the budget. You know, we're, we're seeing a summary of what has been prepared, and there are tabs, and no doubt, some giant master Excel spreadsheet of every single thing the city's spending. And we as citizens don't know that information. So I would applaud the outcome of the COLA increase, and I would probably criticize the process and the extra meetings that had to be had in order to come to the decision that was made today.
So what would you guys recommend? Just to kind of follow that up. How does that process need to look? What would be a smoother way for that to happen? Or, I mean, just give some ideas of what you would recommend as we get into meetings. You go into meetings, backdoor meetings, behind, you know, the, the executive meetings, things like that. How does that need to look? For that budgetary process? Go ahead, Chad.
Transparent. I mean, that's what we asked for. This should have been laid out years in advance of how we're going to do our raises, when we're going to do our raises. And a budget should not be thrown a week before an election. You basically just said the next council has to pay this, 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 including a very large sewer bill. Things that still need, where this should have been planned out. At least give recommendations to the next council, but you do not vote on a budget a week before council. Give the people their vote. Let them have their voice. If they agree with, they'll vote you. But you had the platform. Give your plan, and then let it go.
Go ahead, Leslie.
You have got the budget. They could have postponed the vote on the budget till after the election. They could have postponed the raises after the election. And it would have looked much better than buying votes. And I'm not saying they are. I'm just saying what it looks like.
Yeah. Well, no, you know, just because a budget passed doesn't mean you support it. I think I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty safe in saying I voted against the last two budgets. So you've still got the option to vote against. So, you know, and, and make changes. Like I said, nothing's set in stone.
Okay, Mr. Young.
Yes, sir.
This is specifically for you from a, one of your fans, I'm sure.
Oh, yes.
We've heard you say you were the voice of the citizens, and you were there for them. Also, have heard, heard you say you'd like to convert the cardon property into an entertainment area. Can you please explain how you would go, how you'd like to go about that as far as being the voice of the citizens? Also, what is your vision for the entertainment area? And how would it go about? How would you go about doing it?
You double-whammyed me there. Well, I've, I've been, I've been preaching this since day one. I feel like the citizens are not getting their voice heard through the council members. And we talked about this at lunch today. You know, I've had, I've had something that happened to me, and I told the council, I told the mayor, and, and it was like, oh yeah, we're going, we'll take care of it. And they didn't. It took over a year and a half for this situation to solve itself. So that's what I want to do for y'all. If you have a problem, you come to me, and I will get it taken care of, or try to. And I will not forget about you. Because, I mean, that, that, that situation is what made me stand up here tonight. So as far as the cardon property, this one, everybody knows I'm, I'm very musically inclined. And all I've heard from the start is, is that we need something for the kids, you know, to do. And the movie theater and stuff's fine, but it's sort of, I don't know if Fort Payne can, can handle the movie theater when a family of four, it's $130 to go out that night. Yeah, they might can go out once a month, but is it going to be enough to keep that movie theater alive? You know? So I'm looking at the park as somewhere that the families can go, is, don't cost as much unless there's a concert at the amphitheater. I'm big on amphitheater. Everybody knows that. And I've had oppositions on it. I've heard some of the council members want to put a subdivision up there. That's not happened to me, and it's not happened to citizens that want something to do. So amphitheater, bike trails, campground, I want all that. And I think over a period of six to eight, 10 years, we can achieve that. We can't achieve it in four years. We've got to take care of this other stuff, get suspended now to where it needs to be, and then we can look at, hey, let's do this, let's do that, you know, and, but, but.
Okay.
Like I said, that's, that's what I look at.
All right. Anybody else comment? All right, Steve.
Doc? You got to bear with me on this one. This question's for all candidates. My concern is the safety at Wheels Valley Elementary School with the Public Recreation Center being attached. I want to see a metal detector at the doors of the rec center or strong security. Think about it. Anyone can put anything in their gym bag, socks, clothing, including a gun. Now, think about the unthinkable, and a deranged person is walking around the catwalk while her babies are in the gym, sitting targets. Also, think about anyone up there taking pictures or videos of our children. Will any of the elected officials address this before something horrible happens?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's kind of the world we live in, where we're always having to think about the safety of our kids. I think we are fortunate being Fort Payne where safety, I think, is top-notch. I really do. I think there's a few departments that we can say we really put value in, it's those departments. And especially putting a resource in every school, that helps. It really gives you a little comfort knowing that, hey, if there's somebody there that, at the flip of the switch, they're going to be fighting for your kids. Now, is there 100% proof? No. I mean, we see it every day where, you know, some creep is out there. You know, we can't 100% proof any of that. But I think if we all take that focus of being alert, because again, that's the society we live in today, that we can prevent a lot of it. But I think it's going to take the whole community. There's not going to be a one switch. I've, I've heard the superintendent talk about the metal detectors in all the schools, you know, that, there's, if you can put something out there, there's a criminal out there that can beat that system. So for the creeps out there, they're, they're still going to win a lot of times, so to say. But I think that if we continue to keep focused on the kids, on the safety, then we should be in a better situation.
What do you guys think about the rec center and, and the safety and security there? Y'all got any opinion on that?
I say why not? Why not put up metal detectors? I know that it looks bad, maybe, and we're in a small town, and our small town, thank God, is how it is. But I should always stand up when I'm talking. I apologize. But, but why not? Why not put up any kind of extra provisions? Like you said, at any point in time. It could be your neighbor. It could be somebody that you know. I don't know if you've taken a look at the registered sex offenders in the city, but there are. And there are some. So I think that if we can do it, let's do it. Let's protect our kids as much as possible.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, John.
I had this conversation, it's uncanny. I had this conversation this afternoon with Brian Jett for about 45 minutes. And I need to bring up the point that, that right now, the system they're using is excellent. They've got, each, each staff member has, I guess I'd call it panic buttons. You tap so many times for a medical emergency, so many times, so many times, he gave me the.
Locks the whole school down.
Just locks the whole school down. So there is some safety going on right now. And we talked about metal detectors. I think the system, especially those panic buttons, Randy's out there, he can tell. I think that's a big step forward.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Bo.
Yeah, I would just add, my daughter went through Wheels Valley just a few years ago. She's in Little Ridge now. My son's three, so after pre-K, hopefully he'll be at Wheels Valley as well. And in addition to, you know, we've got Officer Massey, we've got incredible school resource officers. We also have security at the rec center. We've got Randy, we've got Skylar, we've got a great crew, like John said, who's met with Jett today. You know, they, they have a plan. I do think it was a visionary idea for the community to have both things together, pre-Columbine. I do think it was a visionary idea for the community to have both things together, pre-Columbine. But, you know, nowadays, that might not be the right solution long term. And I think the Will's Valley location stays an elementary school, an award-winning elementary school, and maybe long term, far in the future, we get a state-of-the-art rec center somewhere else.
It's not too far off in the future. The rec center is obsolete now, needs a lot of repairs. I can see us putting this on a project list and making some kind of trade or deal with the school system, that they take over that building and the city builds another rec center. And like I say, it's going to take time, but it's got to be on the vision.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead Coach Camp, you hadn't told, come on Coach.
No, all I was going to say, hindsight's 20-20, it probably was a good idea initially, looking back.
Hold it up.
Looking back, it probably was not the wisest thing we could have done was join forces. I just wanted to reiterate what Bo and John have said. I mean, eventually, we're going to have a rec center, so we need to move towards that, you know, not just a rec center sitting by itself, but if we're going to do a new pool or we're going to do new splash pads and all that stuff. It needs to be a family place where I can go work out, my wife can go take the kids here, I can do, you know, that kind of thing, that, you know, like Bo said, down the road. So, but they do a good job over there, you know, and we do have good security things in place, so I just feel like, you know, we could do better. Obviously, you can always do better, but I was going to say, I reiterate what they said.
Mike, you got a quick comment?
Yeah. The, you know, metal detectors is a great idea to a point, but if we put a metal detector on the front door here, somebody has to man that. It's either going to be a law enforcement or at least a teacher. You're going to have to have somebody man it every day, morning and night. So it's a labor issue. The idea of maybe moving the rec center at some time, letting the school take that building over would be a great idea if it could come to that. The police department's very well-trained, including school resource officers. It is a responsive thing if something starts to go wrong, especially in the daytime, you're going to have quite a few there between patrol guys, all investigation going to show up. So it's, the school's pretty trained also. I took something to one of the schools today to go in, to leave for somebody. You know, I have to call the resource guy and tell him to come open the door because I guess the teacher was busy for a few minutes, buzz intercom. So you're not getting in, you're not just walking in simply like it is now. And like someone else said, you know, there's nuts that live in this world, and no matter what we do, we're always going to have an issue behind it, but we need to strengthen as we go and keep moving forward.
Coach Camp and I, we've been through metal detectors, going to Lawson Field in Birmingham for a playoff game before. And Birmingham Police Department came in after the game and said, you've got 15 minutes, we're turning the lights out and we're leaving.
They weren't lying.
They weren't lying either. So we're fortunate in Fort Payne that we don't have a situation like that going.
Well, I feel like it's going to come. You know, 30 years ago, we had kids walking to school in first, second grades, you know. So now, it's, the way the world has changed, we're going to start seeing more of that in the small towns. You're going to start seeing the metal detectors and stuff. It's coming. You can't get rid of it. My daughter, my little one, she started pre-K this year, and I was tickled to death to see two resource officers over at the pre-K center. And that made me feel so much better about her being in school, so. But like I said, today's day and age with the crazies out there, it's going to happen eventually, so.
You're just strengthening my argument for paying our policeman.
Coach Camp, since you're an educator, you get this question. Well, first I was going to ask you about how practice went today, but we've already talked about that. Do you believe the city should support the schools even more than they do now?
I think, I think it's very important that your city supports your schools simply from the standpoint of we're all in this together. You know, I mean, we're not going to get, you know, we've mentioned, you know, industry and business and all the stuff we want to get to move here, they're not going to move here if you don't have a good school system. You know, that's just bottom line, you know? And just like I've always said before, you know, all of us, we all go to different places to eat, we all go to different churches, we all go different places, but probably the closest thing we've got to a common thread is our school system. So I think it's very important, you know, that the school system and city work together, you know, and I think they need to continue to support them, but more or less, I don't know, that's, there's a lot of...
Yeah, there's a lot of gray area in that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah.
Is there anything in particular that you guys or Coach Camp would change or strengthen or do differently with the school system than what you've seen so far, as far as the city's concerned? Any opinion on that? Jeff?
I talked to Jett probably about a month ago, and what he showed me, that where he is today and the schools are today, I was completely satisfied with it. I think they've done a remarkable job with our school systems.
Okay.
The school is a community. I can't separate the two. And the school system, the school board is looking at having to replace the Fort Payne High School. People don't understand how long it's been there and what shape it's in. And it wouldn't, of course, you know you're under the bid law and the modern bid laws, and you don't get the best building. So we're going to have to look at rebuilding the high school. I understand it's going to be the same footprint and use that property, but in the near future, the city's going to have to step up and help, or this will never be done.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Steve.
Mr. Gendlin, what should be the qualifications for people applying for boards?
Say that again?
What would, what should be the qualifications for people applying for boards? Like, for instance, the school board.
Yeah, that's a really great question. Well, yeah, there's multiple seats on every board. And so, I don't think you need the makeup of your board to be identical across, you know, if you have five board members, you don't need five people who are exactly the same. This obviously was not intentional, but one thing I've noticed since I've moved back is there hasn't been a parent of a school-aged kid on the school board. There has been at times, and those kids have grown up. And so, when an opening comes about, I'm not saying that's the right choice, but I think that you have to look at the balance of who's already there. Obviously, except anybody who applies, and make your best judgment based on their character and potentially the right fit for the body that's already there.
I don't know whether to cuss or spit right now. I fought this board appointment situation for four and a half years. I don't like the way it's done. It's never done twice the same way. This has got to be studied and we've got to have a standard the next council coming in.
What did you disagree with?
Well, I disagree with, you know, today, we'll interview five people. Tomorrow, we're going to appoint one person that wasn't interviewed. There's got, it varies every time we have a board appointment. And there's a lot of questions, you know, how long are you going to stay on the board? It's just, we got to have...
Saying inconsistent?
Yes. Be consistent. I don't care what it is, but be consistent.
Okay. Any thoughts on that? Anybody want to respond? Go ahead Leslie. Heather, you're next.
I feel the school boards should be elected, not appointed.
Okay.
That way, we get a good mix of people in there that see what's going on.
Okay.
Not just, let's appoint this business member, that person. That person, because they've already been in working for the city.
Okay.
I think it should be elected, should be a set number of years for each member.
Okay. Heather?
I actually agree with him. I think that the school board is a really huge deal, and I think that the city should have a vote in that. I think that five people electing who they think is best is not good enough.
Okay. Anybody?
So we're talking about any board, right?
Yeah, not just school, that was school board, but he was on that.
One of the biggest qualifications, you shouldn't be a city council member.
Okay.
I think the city council member does not need to be on a board. I think the mayor needs to be involved on them, but I think we got enough, I said this at lunch today with y'all, but I feel like there's enough qualified citizens in this town that can run the boards. And, you know, some people say, well, the city council members, you know, they need to go in, you know, to sort of see what's going on. Well, I'm not have the boards come report to the city council, you know, and that way we know what's going on with it. But I think the city council members need to run the city council.
I swear, if I get back in there, I'll never give that fight up. I don't think councilmen should be on the boards.
Are the, is it still five-year terms?
Well, basically, you know, each board has a different setup. I think some, I think a couple, maybe six years.
Okay.
Good. Miss Heather?
Yes.
Now, this is, this is a question from the citizens, this isn't me.
Thank you for that.
Because I hadn't, I hadn't run every road in Fort Payne. As someone who's run more roads in this city than most have driven, I've seen firsthand how dogs run wild everywhere. Our city currently has no leash law outside of the city park, which puts runners, walkers, cyclists, and our children at real risk. If elected, what specific actions would you take to address this issue, both by establishing leash laws and by promoting other measures that make our streets and sidewalks safer for everyone? And of course, this is incumbent upon you thinking there should be a leash law.
Yeah, you, you really, I had spikes in my armpits, having no idea what the question was, and it's about pets. I would love to talk about that. That's one of my favorite things to talk about. I think leash laws are a great thing. I think they could be beneficial for the public and for the owner, both. If you're like me, I let my dogs run around in the yard, and, but anytime I take her out or him out, they are on a leash. I think it makes it safer for everybody, even if they're a good dog. Guess what? The good dog can come up to you on a leash, just like a bad dog can come up to you on a, without a leash. Kristi Nugent actually let me come and several of us, I think. You have no idea what goes on at the adoption center there. It is probably one of the saddest things that you've ever seen. They also are wanting, I think, I think she said minimum of $500 from the city to donate, and she just needs $500 from each county, and they can get these pets spayed and neutered. So that way, when you come, it's, I think, $80 to adopt, and that pet is already spayed or neutered and ready to go out the door. Which, I am happy to take up money for, if anybody's like, hey, here's 20, I know that sounds bad, but, every bit of the money that you ever give me will go straight to them. I actually said that if, if I do get elected and I'm on council and I can't get the city to budget that $500 or, you know, however much we can budget, that I would take it out of my own check. Because I think it's so important to have every pet spayed and neutered, because you don't want just pets running around crazy. You would not believe how many they have that they take in each week, each month. I mean, it, it's a huge number, so I'd be all for leash law.
Okay. Well, I think if we budget $4,500 for the model trains, I think we can give $500 to get a dog neutered.
Are you guys in favor of leash laws? What do we think?
Well, I don't think it's going to happen right now in this current commission, we, council, we've talked about it before. We've made a, I think it's last year, we made a contribution to the animal care center of, I don't know if it's 2,500 or 5,000, Brian can help me, for their catio, catio, they called it, for outside area, for the animals to go out. So we're supporting that way. And back to the ordinances, leash laws, I've asked for an animal slash bear ordinance for the last several months, hadn't received it yet, but we get a lot of complaints of chickens in people's yards.
Yep.
On their front porches. And the bear situation, getting into the cans more often now. And I've got people send me video of neighbors putting feed out for the bears and drawing them into neighborhoods. Now, we can't, we can't regulate what a bear's going to do, but we can regulate, you're not going to feed this bear.
Yeah.
And trash containers, you know, I think the city should do, try to do something to provide bear-proof containers. I know it'd be an extra cost, but until we get a draft ordinance, we won't do anything. So, we're waiting on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Leslie?
I believe we do need a leash ordinance. I believe we also need an ordinance, if you've got your dog in the back of your truck and you're parked at Walmart and he attempts to bite somebody. I was down at Walmart not too long ago.
Sounds personal, yeah.
There was a white Toyota parked right beside me. If I had not been quicker, he would have got a hold of my head.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, yes.
Should city councilmen be on boards? Should city councilmen be on boards, like the gas?
Oh, no, no, no. I agree with John, city councilmen should not serve on boards. The mayor would need to be in contact with the boards. That could be argued if that should be a paid position or not. He's, you know, they're already receiving pay for it to start with. Through my career and my life here in the city, there's been, you would be amazed what some of the perks on some of these boards are. And I'm not going to get into it tonight, but you know, I'd be glad to talk to somebody about it. A board appointment on some of the boards is, would be way more lucrative than a council position. You could give up your council salary and still come out well. So, definitely against it.
Okay. Anybody else? Cam?
Give him a mic.
I differ this a little bit as all boards, because there are boards that are just volunteer. I was on Fort Payne Main Street Board, it's non-paying, but we had the mayor and Johnny Eberhard on it. And whenever you do projects, a lot of times, you don't know about the ordinances and just certain things, how to go about it, but yet, when they're there, they can give you proper direction. So that, now, paying boards, everybody knows, some of these paying boards, what, $600 a month for 30-minute meeting? And then you see city council members voting themselves on it? But I'm against that completely. But as for volunteer boards like Main Street, and there's other boards out there, those are people with well intentions to do good for the community, so I hate to use a blanket for all of them.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead Mike.
I'd just add, unpaid board is entirely different. If that's a service, if you want to do that, you know, that's fine, and I agree with him, it helps with the communication. But just to be on a board, just to get the perks, that's a paid board, is what I'm talking about, it's entirely different.
Okay. So, are y'all okay to hang for just a little bit? It is seven, top of the hour, and we do want to get the mayors up here, but can we just go a few more minutes? Is that okay? Is everybody okay with that, if we do that? Okay. I guess I'm really not going to ask you, I'm just doing it anyway. So, we've talked about this on our show before with some of you, and I want to make sure that you have an opportunity. We've talked about it, and some of you have had different opinions, but there are oftentimes that you may be presented with a conflict of interest between maybe a business that you own or a job that you have outside of the council or something like that. What are you personally doing? This is for anybody, you can grab a mic, we're not going to go through this. What are you personally doing to think through your conflicts of interest and potentially maybe recuse yourself from a vote or whatever that looks like? What are you personally doing in light of that to make sure? Because several of you have some pretty significant conflicts of interest that could present themselves in council meetings. So, what, anybody can respond to that?
Well, you're going to depend on your lawyer for a lot of this.
Yeah.
You know, a good lawyer will keep you from getting in trouble, that's what he's there for. But you're right, you know, I've got tied to the school system, so it's going to be hard for me to justify voting or something, and I'd have to recuse myself from some of it, so.
Being a teacher and a coach, you know, I obviously would, would not want to vote on a school board member, that kind of thing, or if the city was going to make this big donation, you know, to the school, or, you know, money, you know, money will get you in trouble about as quick as anything. So, you know, I would abstain from that, but I think, you know, I think I should have input, simply because those of you that choose to vote for me have put your trust in me to make, you know, hopefully informed decisions and like-minded decisions, that kind of thing. So, inputs one thing, votes another, you know, so I would have, you know, abstained from any voting on school board members or money being allocated to schools, but that kind of thing, you know, would be, I think, would be definitely top of my list.
We've been cleared to vote on school board members.
You have?
Yeah, that came from Attorney General.
Okay. Anybody? Anybody? Go ahead Heather.
I don't have a business in town, I don't have any conflicts of interest, but I think that anyone on the council, that something like that does come up, I think you should stay away from it at all costs. I think as a council member, you never want to look like you're doing something for yourself as opposed to doing it for the people.
I'll speak to this. So I do have a lot of business, I run a property company, and a lot of my business, basically over 95% is outside of the city of Fort Payne. That's important to me. I weighed that, Brian, when, before I ran in this election, I did not want a lot of my business in Fort Payne to make it look like it's a conflict of interest. A lot of mine's outside. Like I said, less than 5% is inside the city, so that's important for me because I want to represent you and do what's right for the city and not benefit myself at all.
I would agree with Eddie. If something comes up that is an obvious conflict of interest, then obviously you should abstain on that one thing.
I guess you could look at it if, whatever five of us might be hap, happen to get in. If, if I see that in my opinion of something might be a conflict, you know, you could almost call the next guy out and say, should we look at this and do it, do it, open air it in the public? But you shouldn't, you know, my wife shouldn't get hired to a job because we did this deal and we're gonna make a deal and she gets to go to work for him and make good salary. You know, things like that, you know, if it looks bad, it probably is most of the time. And so we should address it as we go. But on a side note, as far as voting, if you're put on the council, the public's put you there to vote one way or the other. And unless it is a conflict, you shouldn't abstain. You should vote and, and they're getting in the sunshine, in the public.
Would any candidate have a problem with the city council meetings being moved to 5:30 so more working people can attend?
I answered a lady on social media about this particular item. I would be in favor of, at the minimum, staying at the current time or doing a hybrid. Do one daytime meeting at 12:30 and one meeting at 5:30. I've got a four-year-old at home, so it's important for me to be at home in the evenings. But also, I know they're citizens. But this lady asked me on, or asked on Facebook specifically, because I was the only one that opposed that the night of the last forum. Todd, why did you say no to move in the times? Well, there's a few reasons I mentioned. So if you move to all-night meetings, you're gonna eliminate second shift, Hal, Ferguson, restaurant workers, all these people. You're gonna basically do the same thing that you would be doing by alienating those people that can't, that work during the day and can't make the daytime meetings. So I'm for a hybrid meeting or a hybrid setup. One at 12:30 a month on a Tuesday and the next Tuesday a 5:30. That way you cover everybody. And also, if you do that, third shift workers, they could sleep in and make the 5:30 meeting once a month. So then everybody's gotta say, and then on the other time that you can't make it, these things are videoed and you could get, I, my plan, and, and in speaking with a lot of the people on this stage, is I hear a lot of transparency. Okay? So I plan for this next council to be very transparent. So you will see an agenda before the meeting and you'll get a chance to chime in. If you've got a question on something and you can't meet, say you're working third shift and then that 12:30 meeting the next time you need to sleep in, you've got a chance before that meeting to address what's on that agenda that you want addressed and you specifically want talked about and discussed. So hope that helps. I'm for a hybrid setup.
What he said.
Okay.
I've been, I was initially criticized for putting stuff on my city council Facebook page as far as agendas and, and income statements and things like that. I think that should be the city's responsibility. I tried my best to do it. I, I can't say I haven't, you know, I may have missed some of them, but I've made an effort to, to try to let people know what's going on. But I think that should be a responsibility that the city clerk or the city treasurer has to do.
Okay. So you have said that this is it for you. If you're elected, you're done.
I'm out.
Okay. Let's talk. You guys, what's term limit? How many, how many terms is good? How many terms is bad? Todd, you wanna go first?
Was I first?
Jumped on that.
I am for a two-term limit for city council. Now, say if that, if elected, of course. If you serve two terms and then there's another board you wanna be a part of and maybe it's a, a board that the council appoints and you wanna be a part of that, that's fine. But I am for a two-term limit. To me, politics is not something you should do for a living. Okay? And I'm gonna go state, national, local, any level. There's too many qualified people and I, I think the tendency is, and I think a lot of you, because I've heard you. Okay? I've heard you through this campaign. A lot of you are tired of this career politician, even locally, because you get set in a way or even more, and I'm gonna say it, you could get influenced. You could get influenced and, and I'm gonna stop there. But anyway, I'm for two-term limits. I'll let somebody else speak.
I, yeah. Todd and I had coffee, probably over, I don't know, a while ago. And we, Todd brought this up and he said, how do you feel about term limits? And he presented two. And I said, well, what if we get in there and we do a really good 10-year plan and you're out in eight, eight years? You know, maybe, maybe we want three terms. I think that's still reasonable. I don't think I want to make a career out of this, like Todd said. But, you know, let's say you cap it at two terms and then they change the term to five years from now on. You know, you, you have to think about the longevity and how much time you're gonna be in.
But you're in favor of some form of a term.
I'm in favor of the limit, but I'd also argue that we have elections for a reason and that's the only mechanism we have right now for a term limit.
Okay.
But yeah, I'd be in favor of it.
Anybody against it? Or go ahead, Chad.
I'm not against it, but I'll jump in the middle.
Okay.
I see the argument, small towns don't have enough people that, you know, can leave their job and do these. So I like the two on, take a term off. And that way you can still come back after four years, but you took your break, you got back out in the city and, you know, took a breather and saw what's going on. So that way it kinda makes it another hybrid and I think it solves both sides.
All right.
There's a reason that the president only has two terms.
Okay. Is anybody against it? Anybody feel like it shouldn't be a term limit? Anybody? Well, and so there we go. All right, I think that, all right, so let's do this. Now we're, we're at 12 after, so let's just do a very quick, if there's anything else, we'll start with Todd. We'll work our way down. 30 seconds, kinda sell yourself, differentiate, differentiate yourself from the rest of the crew up here and have at it. You got 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
A minute, I, I give, you got a little bit of flexibility.
Yes, sir.
A rebuttal, if you wanna say something else, just kinda, kinda summation here.
So from the very beginning, I told you in the meet and greet, and I'll tell you now. I, I'm running because I believe I can make a difference with my business background and that is very diverse. If you haven't heard that already, I've worked for Fortune 500 company with MapCo, dealt with budgets larger than the city has. I've dealt with small companies like Jazz supplying local grocery, grocery stores and convenience stores like that. But also I'm running my own business. So I believe with that diversity, I mentioned in the last forum, well-rounded, that's the term I use. I believe I've got an asset that I can bring to the city. Also drive a school bus. My kids are older. I've got adult kids and I've got a four-year-old. So she's coming up and I want her to have the best Fort Payne that she can have.
Well, like I've said before, I feel Fort Payne could be a better place. But we need diversity and a good team of people to run this town. There's not a lot of cohesion right now with the current board. And I've seen, I've seen the council. And I just wanna be a team player. I wanna make Fort Payne better. I wanna get things done. And I wanna work together.
Well, with me, what you see is what you get. So, you know, you've seen me in action for the past four and a half years and, and I'm gonna continue to fight for you. I don't need 30 seconds to talk. I'll take a question from the audience. I don't, if somebody got something they wanna say, wanna ask, now's the time, because you know I'll answer. Not this one. Not this councilman. Yeah, I don't think it's ever been, been discussed that I know of. I know there's been some rumors of that. What you gotta understand is Fort Payne's paying, what, 85% of that tax that's going to the county. Yes, we do have to get involved in it. You know, luckily, the, the, the county commission can't pass that tax on their own. It's gonna have to be legislated. Whereas Fort Payne, our former government, the city council has the opportunity and authority to pass a tax. So the county's gonna be in for a fight before that happens. But now, do we need to get involved? We absolutely do, because we don't want 85% of our money going out that's helping the county versus helping our schools. If there's anything coming in, I think we should have some kind of agreement where we split that tax up. I'd have to have guaranteed before, I'd have to have guaranteed that our school system would get some of that money before I'd support it. Well, it was, it was a 3%, but I mean, you know, I don't wanna answer for, for him. It just goes back to what I've been saying along, take a stand. Be, be, be what you are tomorrow, be what you, you know, be the same thing you are today. And I think that's what gives politicians a bad name.
Yep. Thank you, John. Let's, let's stay on, on here now. Go, Ken.
I had a high school girl on my bus that talked to me every day. In her senior year, she was very quiet and didn't talk. And I said, Brittany, what's wrong? She said, over the summer, I killed somebody. She was in a car accident on DeSoto Parkway, got distracted, crossed the center line. This wife, mother of two children, was gone. And I'm saying to myself, say something good, boy. I said, well, Brittany, you can't change the past. It's done. But you can make a difference for the future. I said, why don't you get a job that you can save lives? Today she's a nurse and she's saving lives. But my motto now, I wanna apply it to politics. Let's not focus on past or any mistakes been made, but let's make a difference for the future. I wanna be that person that makes a difference for the future.
Thanks, Ken.
Everybody out here basically knows what I wanna do, be for the people. So I'm not gonna get back in that, but I'm gonna be real short on this. I wanna thank everybody that showed up. There's a lot of people here tonight. Also, I feel like the ones that are not up here missed out. They should've been here. And I, I know there was different reasons on it, but I think hearing from the people, the questions the people ask, I think everybody should've been here answering those people's questions. So thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Chad?
I agree. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you for guys for putting this on. I'm running because I think I can make Fort Payne better. And that's where, again, we're gonna pass this to our kids, our grandkids. We wanna continue working on the safety. We wanna continue working with things that we can do as families and we will continue working with the infrastructure. But it starts with our budget, guys. And this is a business. It is $40 million. There should be no reason to raise taxes with $40 million and the way we spend it. So I wanna focus on how we're spending our money, put that in the right places, and I guarantee you we can get things done. But it's gonna take business-minded people that you see. So again, I'm asking for your vote next Tuesday. Definitely stop me if you have more questions, but thank y'all again for coming.
Thanks, Chad.
I'm thankful to have had the opportunity tonight to come and, and share with you guys. And I, and it's pretty simple for me. I, I just want us to be the best version of Fort Payne we can be. I think we need good leadership and we can learn the rest of it. But if we come from a good place and we got good hearts, I want the, the Scottsbers and the Everhols, I want them to be saying, hey, man, what are they doing in Fort Payne? You know, I just wanna maximize what we have. We have a lot of good here. We do a lot of good things. Everything that's, you know, I, I'm not privy to what led up to everything they've done. But we, you know, the, the previous council, you know, because everybody wants to disagree with that, disagree with this. You know, we don't know what led up to those decisions, so I'm not gonna be judgmental. You know, we just gotta move forward from here. And I just wanna be the kinda leader that you guys can say, well, hey, you know that guy over there, that's Coach Camp? He's one of our councilmen, you know? So I just, I wanna be that kinda person for you guys and I just want one special Fort Payne. So thank you.
Thanks, Coach. Bo, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I think I represent the majority of citizens in terms of lived experience and where I am in life. You know, I've got kids, like I said, some aren't in the school system yet, some are in the school system. My mom is newly retired. My in-laws are still working. My wife's grandparents are still local. I, I really see the gamut and I, I understand what the lived experience is for so many people. And I wanna bring out the best for Fort Payne. I also had two home invasions in the fall. I think I talked about this at a chamber event. But that was my push to really get involved and just going through that process of advocating for my family's safety, meeting with the police department, meeting with the mayor, and just understanding that, that we really do need good leadership all the way around. And that's why I wanna run and I wanna serve the people.
Thanks, Bo. Heather?
I do wanna thank everybody for coming out and to every forum that we've had. There's been a really good crew, but I am gonna do something a little different because I wanna say something about you guys. I don't think you have a bad decision. You just have a decision. I've done forums with these guys, I've spoke with several of them, and I just wanna say this entire process is all guts, no glory. Okay? So everybody sitting up here today is 100% a leader. We may lead in different ways, we may have differences in opinion. But what I hope for is that the next five that do get on city council can work as a team. Guys, we can always talk things out. We don't have to be politicians. That's what's great about city politics, okay? We can talk things out just like we're neighbors and that's what I hope to do. That's what I would love for our next five, even if it's not me. I encourage the next five council members, even if it's incumbents, to sit and talk to each other like we're all humans. Guys, we, we have to make big decisions and we are all just human. We may not always make the right decision, but I think putting Fort Payne first and putting each other first is gonna be a huge deal to how our city moves forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Heather. Mike?
One thing I'd look, most of us standing up here, sitting up here are not politicians to start with. I think that'd be a good breath of fresh air. I give John Smith credit for being the only incumbent with the courage to show up when, oh, there's rumors we were gonna get hijacked, all this, you know, the questions, whatever. And you assured us in the back, you know, that we wasn't. But you know, people that's been here before that are currently running especially should be standing here. Other candidates that are not here, I know of one that has a medical issue in the family, that would be the only one. If it was up to me, I'd give him a pass to. The others should be standing here. It's a little unnerving to be in front of people, you know, I know about half of you, half I don't. You know, and you don't know what the question is or what's coming. But you know, you gotta have the courage to stand up there and give your best shot and go from there. I'm Mike Grant, I'm running for council. I'm gonna do a good job, I'll get in. And that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Let's give them a hand. Let's take about a five-minute break. We'll come back and Pete and Brian, if we could just talk in back and y'all just hang tight, go to the restroom. We'll be right back.
By the way, if anybody would like to donate to the Decab Animal Center, I would be more than happy to take your donations. If I can get 20 bucks from somebody, $5 from somebody, I would love to give that money to them.
All right, if we could get Pete and Brian, y'all come on up. All right, if we could get Pete and Brian, y'all come on up. All right, well, y'all got to sit down. Let's go. Am I on back there? Can y'all hear me in the back? All right, let's make our way back. Now, yes, you can have one. Pete, you want a water? Yeah. She said, I like it like this. All right, if you will, make your way back to your seat. We're going to get started. There we go. Thank you, Chris. Now it's going through. So appreciate you guys coming out. We're going to try to respect your time and keep this as quickly as we can. But it should be a little bit easier with two guys up here and not 10. So I want to say this. I would consider both these guys friends. Know both of them well. We've talked several times. So there is no animosity, I don't think, in this room. But what we do need, what this is, is a job interview, right? Amen? That we're seeing who's the best fit for our city. You guys got to make that decision. I've got to make that decision. We all have got to make that decision. So we are going to ask tough questions. We're going to get right into it. We're going to dig in. And first off, I want to thank these guys, if we could, for coming and showing up to answer these questions. So we're excited about this. So without further ado, Steve, you ready?
Yes, sir. All right. You got it. Pete, this is for you. This is obviously from one of your fans. It said, Pete Davis said he's going to put $8 million more in the city's accounts than what there is now. Where is he going to get the money?
Well, I think what I said was that, right now, our general fund's running around $3.5 million. And it costs close to that to operate the city on a monthly basis. And my goal would be to have $6 million in our general fund. And of course, they could be tax dollars is where they'll come from. Because you could feel more comfortable, our city treasurer would feel a lot more comfortable knowing that he had money to pay the bills with. And right now, we are sitting on about $4.5 million in our savings, the CDs, and things that are drawing interest. And with a 30-some-million-dollar budget, I truly feel like that the city should have $12 to $15 million in our savings account. And that would put you close to $20 million with the combined accounts. And you could operate a city that way. And our city treasurer, you know, he would actually think he was living in a dream world if we could get to those points. And it wouldn't be hard to do. We just got to cut out the wasteful spending. I mean, we could save, we could pay our bills, probably carry a balance of around $6 million in the general fund, and put back $2 to $4 million a year, based on the tax revenue we are currently getting.
Brian, do you have any response to that?
Well, I will say that at the beginning of this term, we did not currently have a savings account. That is something that we created this term to put money into a savings account so that when you had those rainy days, that you could have money to do something with.
Okay. Pete, do you have any response to that? Or is there any back and forth you want to do here?
No, I mean, I just say again that that's great, you know, I think it's wonderful. But we just, it needs to be more. I mean, we need to, wasteful spending, we need to cut it out. And with a 30-some-million-dollar budget, we need to have a lot more in there in case something came up big time, like a sewer project or something, that we needed to spend $5 million or $10 million on, you know?
We asked the city council this, but this may be more of a mayoral question. Should all city jobs and wages be posted to the public in the public domain?
You talking to me? I'd be fine with that. I feel like right now, from what I've learned, that there are people in positions within the city of Fort Payne that are, they may have one job title, but they may get paid for a different job title. And they probably getting, or in my opinion, they getting paid more than their job is, should be paid. And we need to look at that. We could save the city a lot of money there if we did, I guess, look at everybody's pay. And those people are just getting overpaid, in my opinion. You know, we ought to adjust those.
Mayor Bain?
Yes, I mean, I'm in favor of having those posted.
Okay. This was also touched on in the previous forum. But I noticed that you had said you had trouble hearing the question. And I think it may have been presented as a yes or no question. And it's probably more detailed than a yes or no question. This is for Mayor Bain, and then for Pete. Would you support and cooperate with ICE if they conduct an investigation in Fort Payne?
Yes. That question was a little misleading. And I think Heather addressed it a while ago, as far as that could be more than a yes-no question at times. I am full support of standing behind our law enforcement, should ICE come in. And to be able to, I mean, if it's a federal law, it's a law. And yes, as mayor, I will stand behind that.
Yeah, I would totally agree. I mean, that is a federal agency and federal law. And, I mean, I don't feel like I'd want to go to jail over, you know, standing in front of them.
That's no way to spend retirement, is it? Okay. First, for Mayor Bain, and this may be a little dated after today. Do you think the city employees deserve a raise? And will you push for a raise if a concerned citizen who is concerned, you did not speak up for a raise?
I do think our employees deserve a raise. And we, early on in this administration, we looked, our city employees were not making an average that the state employees or the state city employees make. We did a study and found out that our city employees were not making as much as the state average. Therefore, we were losing employees. We were losing people right and left. We'd get them, bring them in here and train them, and then we were losing them. So we worked really hard, the council worked really hard to get those rates raised to be able to be at a somewhat average. And I feel like if we don't continue that with a COLA raise, that we're going to get back in that same shape that we were in at the beginning of this administration.
Okay. Pete, do you have a response to that?
I do. I was opposed to a COLA raise. And the reason being is a COLA raise gives everybody in the city the same amount of a raise. So everybody just got a 6% raise. I had two or three department heads tell me that, when we talked about raises and what have you, they told me that if their employees got a raise, they would be thrilled to death about that. But that if they didn't get a raise, that they would not have a problem with that. And with the, I guess, the situation of finances as the way it is right now, that, you know, they were fine with not getting a raise. And then I'll go back to the people that I feel like that are, their pay is not appropriate to what their job is. You know, we just gave them a 6% raise also. So I'm all about merit raises. I think there ought to be employee evaluations, especially when you get to your department head, your city clerk, your, I don't know, the treasurer, the human resources person, whoever it may be. You know, we need a system to where we do employee evaluations, and you get a raise based on evaluation.
Yeah. So Brian, you've been in office in these kinds of conversations. Have you had those? Are you aware of that, the things that Pete's bringing up?
Yes, we do evaluations. Each one of our department heads do an evaluation now. It's been talked about through the council about doing, you know, merit raises and COLA raises.
Yeah.
And it just never has, the council has never bit on the fact of doing a merit raise.
Yeah. So Pete, you'd had conversations with department heads that said, hey, I'd be willing for my employees to have one and me not.
That's true.
In a format that you'd say, okay, well, that's a way we can save some tax dollars there. That's one of those line items that you can kind of go through. And so, Brian, are you, what's your thoughts on that in far as going to department heads or having that kind of conversations in order to keep the budget down and the numbers down?
Yes. Anything that we can do to keep the budget down, you know, I'm always in favor of.
Okay. All right. Steve?
This is for the incumbent, Mayor Bain. In the last five years, have you made any mistakes that you would have done differently now?
Uh, every day.
Where do you start?
I feel like, you know, first of all, let me say, I'm not perfect. And for somebody to think that I think that I'm perfect, you know, that's absurd. I'm human, and I'm going to make mistakes, and I'm going to continue to make mistakes. As long as I'm living on this earth, I'm going to continue to make mistakes. But I feel like that, and this is the way I have always looked at this, as being in office, as long as I can lay my head on my pillow at night and go to sleep and know that I have prayed about a situation and know that I've got a good feeling about that situation, and I can go to sleep and know that, I'm good with it. Is it always going to be the right decision? Probably not. But I can guarantee you that I'm going to weigh it out. And it's going to weigh heavy on me. And I'm going to know that, like I said, I have given it my thoughts. I've given it, you know, to the higher power up above and know that when I make that decision, that it's been prayed about.
Sure. All right. So I'm going to sling this out here. This is just us guys talking. Because I want to, I've had several conversations, you know, like we saw before. We didn't set out to do this show to be where we are right now. I mean, this was the last thing on our radar. We just wanted to do a fun show. And so we ended up in this race. So I've had several conversations, mayor's race, Bain, you know, who are we going to go with? And so here's the comment, I'm just going to share it with you, because I don't know how to sugarcoat this. Here's what I hear is, because it's both of you, like Brian is a really nice guy, but just not a strong leader. But I don't know what I'm getting in Pete. He's never been in politics. So I got a choice here. Like, am I going to go, okay, well, I'm not sure he's a strong leader, but this guy's never been in politics? And so, and one of y'all is going to be the mayor. Like, the mayor is sitting right in front of us right now. So in your opinion, how do you rectify that? And how do you sell yourself, having never been in public office, you know, and the comments about leadership? How do you, what do you say to that? I don't care. Grab it.
Well, I will say that, excuse me, that's absolutely the most thing that I've here heard, is who is Pete Davis, you know? Because I'm not as well-known around town, I guess, and what have you. So, I mean, I guess to me, you know, I'm looking at the mayor's position as more of a business. And I feel like that I am the most qualified as far as running the business. And, you know, the city is a business. It's a big business. And that's what we need. We need somebody that's going to take the bull by the horns and be willing to stand up to whatever council members are elected and say, you know, we can't do that, you know? And I think, I mean, from my perspective, you know, the treasurer is one of the most important people in City Hall. And he's not being listened to. You know, there's been lots and lots of money that's been spent that the treasurer has told them, we don't have the money to spend that for. And it just, it went on and got spent anyway, you know? So, I mean, I think as a mayor, I would definitely put a lot of stock into the treasurer's opinion, the city clerk's opinion, and those people, you know? Because they know what the city's made up of. And, you know, I don't know, as Pete Davis, do I know a whole lot about Fort Payne politics? No, I do not. But my promise to everybody is that if I'm elected on August 26th, on August 27th, I will continue, because I've already started doing it. But I will continue finding out everything I possibly can about how the city of Fort Payne runs. And on the day that I take office in November- And on the day that I take office in November, I will know a good bit about it and be able to walk in the door running.
Okay. Brian?
Okay, I ran for mayor mainly because I wanted to make a difference and I wanted to be in the community. I've been in the community for 20-plus years, various organizations, various volunteer clubs. I've done, I've been involved with the Children's Advocacy Center, with the Relay for Life, United Givers Fund. I have been involved in lots and lots of different type events and different things in the community. I didn't run for mayor to sit behind a desk and just get a paycheck. I ran for mayor to be involved, to be in the community. I want to be out there in the community. I want to be out there working and doing the things that I feel like is the face of Fort Payne. And being able to know that we've got somebody that is involved and that is plugged in to what is going on in the community and knows when there's needs out there and can address those needs.
All right, this is for each candidate. And Mayor, you may already do this, I just don't know. Will you employ a person whose job is to make sure public hearing announcements and press releases contain factual information? And if there are misprints or typos that would be misleading or if notice does not make it into the paper, do you feel that you should make a retraction and/or reschedule the hearing to ensure the citizens have a chance to voice their concerns?
Yes, that is, a lot of that falls under the clerk's position. The clerk is appointed by the council, so the new incoming council will, in essence, be appointing that person and hope that they will make that decision wisely.
Yeah, I agree with that, that the clerk would be that person, and they would need to put out all the information. And if they did leave, misspell a word or leave something out, they should do a retraction and possibly have another hearing or what have you, you know?
Thank you. Okay, for both candidates, do you support term limits? Or are you just comfortable leaving it up to the voters, how to be a term limit or not?
I think term limits are in place, and that's called an election. I don't feel like that you should get in here and just continue to stay and stay and stay. I do feel like there are, I think Bo said it best, you know, there could be, you know, maybe two, three terms, because there's going to be things that you want to do and you set out to do. You've got to have those years to be able to see that come to fruition.
Yeah, I'm not so much on term limits. I think if, like I said, the election is your, the people decide. Yeah, that's your term limit. And, you know, if you've got some money doing a good job and everybody in the city's, you know, completely happy with them, the way city government is going, then, you know, it would be up to the citizens.
For, this is for each candidate. How do you guard against the appearance of conflict of interest?
Well, I, personally, I can't think of a thing that would make me feel like I had a conflict of interest as far as being the mayor of Fort Payne. I mean, basically retired and, you know, so I don't serve on any boards, I don't do anything like that. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think I'd have any kind of conflict.
I don't as well. I don't see any conflicts of interest in the things that I participate in.
So Pete, one of your things on Facebook is the ordinances, some of the disarray that some of the neighborhoods are in. What would you do different than what would currently be going on? And then Mayor Bane, you'll get to respond to that as well, as far as when you get in office and trying to clean up some of that, and you got any specific plans or?
Oh, sure. I mean, and my plans aren't going to call for a lot of spending. You ride up and down the city streets of Fort Payne, and, you know, we've got stop signs as covered by trees and bushes. We've got missing street signs. Had a lady tell me that driving up Godfrey Avenue at 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, and especially in the rain, that you can't tell where the road is, you know? I mean, we need to line our streets. I mean, there's just so many small things that we could just do to Fort Payne to make it look just 100% better, you know? And then, as far as the, you know, abandoned houses and the junk cars, and there's ordinances on the books now. They've just not been enforced up until, I guess, the last two months. We've had more of that kind of thing happening than we've had in years, you know? So, yeah, that's just, you know, you got to, you got to start on day one and continue all the way through your term with.
Okay. Mayor Bane?
When I became mayor, we did not have an official ordinance officer in place and had not had for quite some time. And things had kind of been let go for probably 20 years, 25 years, and things had just been, you know, like I said, let go. And I'm big on making sure that things are cleaned up and are clean. I've held several garbage cleanup days through civic club organizations and through the city, and got out myself and went out and picked up garbage on these days and tried to make sure that we're addressing those kind of things. I went to the council and said, look, we need an ordinance officer. And so they created that position. I was able to hire an ordinance officer, but by the time he was hired into office--
Jet stolen.
Do what?
Jet stolen.
Yes. They, by the time he got put into place, we probably needed three ordinance officers at that time to take care of a lot of the things that had not been done. We had, the ordinances was not anywhere that anybody could be, that could be found. I pushed and pushed to try to get this MUNI code to where our ordinances are online. So now you can go online, and that was like, and John can tell you, that was like pulling teeth to try to get this done. But we got that, the ordinances are where you can go online and look at those now. Some of them, they need to be readdressed. Some of them were done, you know, 15, 20 years ago. They need to be looked at, and they need to be addressed. That should be, you know, that would come through the planning commission. But you're right, we hired our ordinance officer, and he was stolen by the school system. So we just got put in place another ordinance officer. We had our inspections guy retired in May. So there's been a lot of changing that we're trying to get to that place to where we can get some of these things. And there is a process that you have to go through to have a property cleaned up, or I know we just got one that went through court on Monday night. So, you know, it's that process, and it's got to be some, you got to have somebody there that's working on it and making sure that that process is being fulfilled and it don't get dropped somewhere, because it's real easy to get dropped in that process.
Hey, can I say something about that?
Sure.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the, as far as the ordinance goes. I mean, there's so many ordinances on there, on our books now that are just so outdated and just so many gray areas in them that it depends on who reads it as to which way you can actually interpret it. And, you know, it doesn't really matter who the mayor is. I think the person in that position regardless, that should have been a top priority. I mean, over the last five years, 10 years, whatever it may have been, I think that, you know, we should have never let our city get as far gone as it is. I mean, we are, our city is in terrible shape. I mean, and it's, you know, it didn't just happen yesterday. It's been going on for the last five years, 10 years, whatever, you know? So I just feel like no matter who the mayor is, you know, that's part of the mayor's job, and it should have been recognized then, now, when it--
Okay, this is for Mayor Bane. Why were Marshalls and Five Below chosen? We have several dollar stores and a Beals already. Wouldn't it be better concepts, or wouldn't better concepts better suit the consumers?
I'm not sure I understand.
Since Marshalls and Five Below, they're asking why they were chosen to come in when they said, we already have dollar stores and a Beals, B-E-A-L-S already. Wouldn't better concepts better suit the consumers?
I think that came from a lot of citizens reaching out, wanting, and what we heard was TJ Maxx, TJ Maxx, we want a TJ Maxx, we would like to see a TJ Maxx. Marshalls is owned by TJ Maxx. And reaching out to the developer, you know, I know I had many conversations with him, and that's what I would tell him, you know? And they were looking at bringing in Marshalls instead of a TJ Maxx and a Five Below. They're, you know, they're looking at other different type, I guess, businesses or retail shops to go into where the Big Lots building was at. And I have told them that we want something that we don't currently have something like. We want to reach out there and get something that's going to be new tax dollars coming in. It's not the same thing as what we've already got.
So there's been a lot of public debate about the city owning buildings, the city owning properties, what to do with it, where does the city's responsibility towards the economy of Fort Payne end, and where does private investments and things like that? What are both of your opinions on how much, because you talked about Marshalls and Five Below and other investments or monies given to various businesses? Where does the responsibility of the city stop? And really, because we've talked about, and I think there was public debate on Facebook about the movie theater, and everybody in the world is talking about Albertville. I'm so tired of hearing about Albertville on our show, but that's where it's going to. And so how do we rightly see, in your opinion, both of you, how the city facilitates that or doesn't? How the city purchases property or doesn't and creates incentives for businesses to come versus giving outright monies? How do we rightly think about that, in your opinion, as mayor, or future mayor?
Well, to go back to the Marshalls, I mean, I've had lots of people I've talked to when I get out and talk with folks that have concerns about a Marshalls, because they look at it like we've had, I guess, Goodys, Peoples, you know, retail stores like that. So they saying, okay, we're going to give Drinker Development a million dollars to get this Marshalls here. You know, how do you know Marshalls is going to make it? You know, how do you know that it's not going to be another Goodys or another Peoples or whatever those stores were that were similar to Marshalls? You know, how do you know that two years down the road, they're not going to close their doors, you know, because people don't support them or whatever? And, you know, that's a legitimate question, I guess you could say, you know? And as far as other properties in Fort Payne, I think Fort Payne owns too much property. I mean, I just feel like that, you know, we've definitely bought way too much property over the years, and we need to look at ways to, like you said, either get someone in these, on these properties, or maybe even start liquidating some of the properties, you know?
I would speak to the fact that you referenced the movie theater. I have personally sat down and met with three different movie companies and had one of them almost, almost ready to sign on the dotted line, ready to put in a movie theater. And he called me back, and he said, we've looked at the numbers. He said, we just don't think we can make it happen. And, you know, you're, we're constantly reaching out, trying to get those companies to come and look at Fort Payne, trying to get, I worked for a solid year trying to get a bowling alley to come. I met with different folks after different folks, trying to show them different places, trying to get them to come. And there's a reason, you know, why those folks are not coming. I mean, they're looking at the dollars and looking at, you know, the market here. You know, we had a bowling alley at one time. We had a skating rink at one time. We had a movie theater at one time. There's a reason that those things are not here now. They were not supported. They were not supported by the community. And I get it, they got to be, you know, I hear all the time about Lucas Thems over at Albertville. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, I mean, great place to go. I've been one time. They got heated seats, they got reclining seats, they got concessions. I mean, it's everything that you could want. It's the luxury, but ours was not like that. It would have to be something like that for people to actually go to and be a part of.
And that would take a large sum of money. So, I mean, if you think about it, the old movie theater, I'm sure the guy that owns that property is making more money renting that space out to park cars on now than he ever would in the movie business, you know? So, I mean, that's just a really hard pill to swallow, because that'd take a private investor. And, you know, we can, the city could, I guess, do some kind of incentive to try to get someone here, but, I mean, that's just going to be a tough one. We're going to have to build our city up and get it to be a much better and more inviting place, and then maybe possibly we could get a movie theater or something.
What do you think needs to happen to move more business to the north end of town?
I don't know what's got to happen, but I can tell you this, that everybody that I bring into Fort Payne or that comes into Fort Payne that I have talked to, I bring them right up here to this exit before I take them anywhere else to look at this exit up here. And the number one thing is the traffic count out here on Green Hill. The last time a business looked at it was like 1,700 or 17,000 on Green Hill. On 35 down here, it was like 25 or 28,000. So, of course, they're going to want to go, everybody wants to go with the south end of town. We're not going to have any property down there for anybody to go eventually. And so up here is what you've got to look at. And that's why we feel like getting the sewer system completed is very imperative to make sure that it ensures that this up here gets taken care of.
Does that surprise you? Because even though the traffic count was so much higher, it's just four miles apart.
Right, and that's what I try to tell folks. I said, it's just four miles down the road. It's not that far. If, I can guarantee you, if you put something, if we had a big enough anchor at this end of town, that it would, it would happen. And I, to piggyback off of what Ken said earlier, I have contacted Buc-E's. I've contacted them two different, on two different occasions and been turned down both times.
Yes, it's really sad that a small town like ours, they still look at traffic count. Because, you know, our town, four miles is not that far, and the majority of the people that own the south end of town, they may even come from the north end of town, but they don't travel this road here. They may jump on the interstate and run down, you know, or something, Airport Road maybe even, you know? So, but I'll go back to cleaning up the city. I think that the north end of town's been neglected, and it could look a lot better and maybe would attract someone by, you know, if you had it making, had it looking a good bit better, then it's a possibility somebody might would consider coming.
This questioner, I said, as a newer resident of Fort Payne, how can the city council and mayor improve and ensure consistency of zoning regulations and inspections? Currently, there is different information depending on who you speak with, and no written records are available.
Can you repeat that question?
Sure. Sure. This-
Came from a citizen on Facebook.
"As a newer resident of Fort Payne, how can the city council and mayor improve and ensure consistency of zoning regulations and inspections? Currently, there is different information depending on who you speak with and no written records are available."
I think that goes back to the fact that some of our ordinances and zoning and stuff needs to be looked at. And we need to look at those things on a regular basis and make sure that everybody is versed in knowing what to say, how to say it, and, and what, what those different zoning ordinances mean. And that whole department, like we, our zoning department, there's our inspection, zoning, we've got, we've got several folks retiring out of that department. And we've got new folks that are coming in and that are taking on roles. And that is one of the, the key things is to make sure that all of them are working out of the same chapter, so to speak.
Well, I think John Smith may have hit on this one pretty good because he was talking about no consistency. And I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I think that, you know, that's part of the city being run as a business. And it ought not be where, it depends on the day or the situation, it ought to be something very consistent. The rules ought to be there and we ought to abide by them. But that's, that's part of running the city as a business. And, you know, every planning committee, commission person, the zoning persons that's on those boards, you know, they need to abide by whatever the rules are. And if we're gonna change a rule, we need to change it for everybody, not just whatever day it is, you know?
Okay, we're down to the last two questions. First for Pete. What's the first thing you would do? What's the first thing you'd like to change if you were elected mayor?
Well, the first thing I'd like to change, I guess, is, I mean, I definitely think that the budget and the spending in Fort Payne, I truly believe that we need to take the budget and go line by line. I do feel like there's a lot, and John's been there and he knows, I guess, but knows more than I do about it. And he made mention to that. You know, he, he led us to believe when he spoke that there is lots of things that could be cut there and, you know, that we, wasteful spending, you know? So that, that to me is my number one thing. And then of course, number two is cleaning up the city. And I'm gonna listen to all of our citizens when, when they call and have a concern of the citizens, of the city, you know, and what have you. But I just think the main thing is that we need to focus on where our money's coming from, where our money's going. And, you know, Fort Payne is, it could be just a wonderful little town.
And Mayor Bain, what's the first, if you're reelected, what's the first thing you'd do?
Well, I'm gonna continue, continue doing as I've always done. And that is, you know, to attend to, to, to the mayor's business just as, as always, as I always have. And trying to make sure that everything is done. And of course, working with the new council and getting to know, you know, them on a, on a personal level. I feel like it's important to have that harmony with your council and mayor as we work together. And realizing that, you know, the council is in charge of the budget and, you know, they hand it off to me. And then it's my responsibility to, to make sure that, you know, things are, are carried out the way that the council has, has positioned it.
All right. So that's pretty much all the questions we have. But I'd like to take a minute for each of you. Pete, you can start with you. Just kind of sell yourself. Let everybody know anything else you want them to know about tonight, about Tuesday's election. And then we'll, we'll end with Mayor Bain and then we'll close out.
Well, I know how you and Steve are, so I'm gonna start with just a little bit of humor. I'm not Pete Little. And I, I love Pete Little to death. I mean, don't get me wrong. And I pray for his sweet wife every day. And I hope all of y'all do too. But sometimes Pete just says it like it is, you know, and-
He will tell you what he thinks.
Oh, yeah. He definitely will put it out there. And when it comes election day, I just hope we don't get the two Peets confused, you know? But, yeah, I don't know. I, I just, my, my biggest thing is running Fort Payne like a business, you know? The, the mayor's job is to be the CEO of the city. And, you know, he needs to be on top of everything that happens within the city, whether it's with the public works department or the rec department or sanitation department. Doesn't matter what it is, you know? He needs to be on top of it and he needs to be at those places seeing what's going on. One little thing that I know that took place that I think should have been, could have been, should have been prevented was the concrete block wall that was built at Sports Complex. And soon as it was built, it was basically torn down because it was not properly built. And then I think Johnny Eberhart made a statement one time that in that same area up there that we went in and started paving, and he just happened to be driving by and saw them starting, when they started paving. And he stopped by and said, "Hey, aren't you guys gonna put lights in this parking lot?" And they said, "Yeah." And he said, "Well, don't you think you ought to run those trenches, dig those trenches and put those lines in before you pave over it?" You know? And it's just small things like that. I, I think that's the mayor's responsibility. I think he ought to be in touch with his department heads enough and, and know. And when you've got a big project like those going on, he ought to be there looking at them. And those ought to be the kind of things that I feel like I can bring to the table where, you know, if, if you start a concrete block wall and you're gonna build it 10 foot tall and 200 yards long or whatever, I'm gonna go up there and see what you're doing. And, you know, from my business experiences and just, I mean, life in general, I know that you don't build that kind of wall without digging or footing or you putting rebar into the, into the block, you know? So pretty sure I could have stopped that before it got started and would have saved the city 20, 25 million, I mean, 20, $25,000. Because that's basically about what it costs the city to do all that. And then we turned around and hired somebody else to do it, you know?
Okay. Mayor Bain?
I just want to say that when, when I came into office, I mentioned we didn't have an ordinance officer. And our department heads were not having a department head meeting of any kind. I was able to put together our department heads, we have a, a department head meeting every month now. And, and we work, work together with all of our departments, all of our department heads come together. We talk about things. We, you know, if, if this department's got something going on and this department over here has got some extra time, they can jump in and, and help that department. I've always tried to, to be as honest and as upfront about everything. I don't, I don't know everything there is to know. I'm learning every day and I'll continue to learn every day. And I have a heart for Fort Payne. I love Fort Payne. I was born here in Fort Payne. I went all through school here in Fort Payne. My whole life has been right here in Fort Payne. And, you know, I love this area. I am, I am devoted to, to carry out, you know, what, what a mayor is supposed to do. And I'm here, I asked for your vote on Tuesday, August the 26th to continue to be your mayor. But if August the 27th, I get up and I'm not the mayor, I'm still gonna be the same Brian Bain that I am today. And I made a commitment that when I came into office back in 2020, that I would be the same person when I leave office as I am when I come into office. I don't want it to change me. And I have so far been able to stand to that. And I will commit to standing to that for the rest of my life.
And, and I really don't feel like the mayor's race is about me and Brian. I mean, it doesn't have anything to do with me or Brian as a person. It's about Fort Payne, you know? I mean, there's no doubt about it. I moved here in 1988 and, I mean, I, my two boys went to Fort Payne. My wife grew up in Fort Payne. But they both went to Fort Payne, graduated Fort Payne. And, I mean, from day one, when they were five years old or whatever and start playing in youth sports, I was very active in all those things they did. We, I coached baseball, basketball, soccer, all those things with my boys. And when they got to be high school age, I got very active in the sports and stuff they ran there. I headed up the, took over the Fort Payne Boosters Club when my boys were in school. And when I took over the Fort Payne Boosters Club, they handed me a checkbook and I looked at it and I said, "You only got $2,000?" And they were like, "Yep." And I'm like, "Well, how do you do anything with $2,000?" And they were like, "Well, you're gonna have these fundraisers, you know? We do this drawing and we do this, that and the other." But we did all of that when, during the two or three years, whatever it was, I was a part of that. But when I left the Fort Payne, when I handed off the checkbook from the Booster Club, it had $50,000 in it. And I had given just every dollar any athlete or athletic program or cheerleader program or whatever it was, asked for to them, you know? So, but I, I feel like I'm just as big a Fort Payne. I mean, I feel like it, I've spent the majority of my adult life in Fort Payne, so.
Okay. All right. Hey, I, I want to thank y'all for trusting us with this opportunity. I know that not everybody came. You did and showed up and answered tough questions. And I know, I don't know, I don't have, I don't have to tell you guys to go vote because I think everybody here is gonna be voting and on Facebook. So thank you for trusting us. Thank you, guys. If you're not listening to Lunch with Brian and Steve, then I don't know what's wrong with you. You should be. You need to see Holly Allen right there. Thank you, Holly, for, for coming in. Chris, thank you, guys. Maury, has he already gone to the restaurant? Thank you, guys, for hosting. Thank you, guys.
Just want to say one more thing. Anybody that ever wants to get in touch with me, my cell phone number is 256-996-4101. 996-4101.
Yeah, I did my mailer and I put a phone number on it, believe it or not. And for about two days after that mailer went out, my phone lit up. I'm talking about-
Just wait.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was good.
Thank you, guys. Thank y'all for showing up. We appreciate it.